Welcome, everybody. This is October 6th, a continuation of the hearing from last Thursday, October 4th, October 1st. Good evening, my name is Eric Johnson, I'm the Chair of the Town of Sherburne Select Board. We are here today to conduct a hearing in order to determine whether or not there is just cause to institute discipline up to including termination against Police Chief Richard Thompson. The hearing results from a notice of hearing dated September 15th, 2020 as to Chief Thompson. Present for the purpose of representing the town is Deborah Ecker of KP Law. Chief Thompson is present with counsel. I guess if the counsel could present himself.
Attorney Joyce. Chairman, Austin Joyce, representing Chief Thompson.
Very good. The hearing will proceed as follows. Actually, the hearing is going to continue, so I'm going to read this a little differently. The hearing is going to continue from last time. Last time, we were, Attorney Joyce was presenting his case and presenting witnesses. I believe he had, I think he said two more witnesses to call, and we'll continue at that point as well. Just as a reminder, strict rules of evidence not necessarily apply in this setting, so I'd advise both councils that objections can be made, but again, the strict rules of evidence may not apply. At the conclusion of that testimony, each side will be allowed a reasonable amount of time for our closing argument. Chief Counsel will make their closing presentation first, followed by Ms. Ecker. And after that point, the Select Board will deliberate and render a decision. All right, without any further ado, I believe it is in your court, Attorney Joyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, we're going to call Officer Kelly Bush.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I know that she is counsel with her, so if you can unmute counsel, just in case he needs to speak, it is Ryan Murphy.
Okay, there's Ryan Murphy. I guess, Jeff, do you have control of that?
No, I don't, unfortunately David does.
I haven't.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Redundant controls to Jeff, I think it's good for the clerk, that redundant controls on this as well.
We all set?
All set.
Want to swear the witness?
Oh. Okay. You swear to tell the truth and the whole, or the whole truth?
I do, I do.
Okay, for the record, would you state your name, please?
Kelly Bush.
And could you tell us what your employment is?
I am a police officer for the Town of Sherburne. I've been a police officer for a little over three years.
Sometime in 2017, then?
Correct, yeah.
And since you've been in the Sherburne Police Department, who's been the chief?
Chief Thompson.
Now, Officer Bush, you have some involvement in some of the things going on here, sorry. I hate Zoom because they keep moving your picture on me, so I can't watch. You keep bouncing around the board on me, so bear with me a little bit. Now, let's go back. You're aware of the investigation and what's at issue here in this hearing, correct?
I am aware.
All right. Now, you had some involvement in a few of the incidents that are the subject of this hearing, correct?
Correct.
So let's talk first about one of them, if we go back, and I think it's, it might be the older, older incident. You were involved in an incident in October of 2019 that occurred out on Farm Road, right?
Correct.
Okay. And did that involve several town employees besides yourself?
Correct.
And that's the Down Tree Incident, right?
Yes.
All right, and without getting into the details of the incident itself, how did that incident affect you?
I was upset about the incident. I thought it got a little out of hand.
Okay. And what did you do after the incident was over?
I reported it to Sergeant Tedstone.
All right, and was he the oncoming shift supervisor?
Yes, he was working an overtime shift and he was the next supervisor on.
Okay, and meaning he, it happened at about the change of shift times?
Approximately, yes, yes.
Okay, and after you informed Sergeant Tedstone, what did he do?
I believe, or he advised me to write a to from regarding the situation and what had transpired.
Okay, and the to from, who was it to and who was it from?
It was from me and it was to Chief Thompson.
Okay.
I think I wrote it directly to Chief Thompson, not Sergeant Tedstone.
All right, and was that at Sergeant Tedstone's direction?
Correct.
And what did the report have to do with? Well, but, so we don't get into any trouble, the report had to deal with the incident that happened on a farm road, right?
Correct.
And it had to deal with your observations in connection with that incident, correct?
Yes.
All right, when did you do that report?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
When did you do that report?
It was the day after I did the report. I believe I was on evening shifts, so I believe it was, I came in a little bit early, I believe it was around 2:00 the next day, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and did the other officer that was with you out at Farm Road have to do a report too?
I believe so.
But when, when you talked to Sergeant Tedstone, was the other officer there with you?
Yes.
Okay. Now, after that report was done, what's the next thing that, that happened in connection with that incident that you can recall?
I sat down with Chief Thompson.
Okay, and when was that?
I believe it was also the next day.
What happened when you sat down with Chief Thompson?
We talked about what had transpired the night before.
All right, and as a result of that meeting, was there any consensus reached?
I'm sorry, this was so, it was so long ago, like, it's hard to remember the exact details, but I believe the consensus was to, he was going to, to have a complaint, or he was going to reach out to Dave Williams, I believe.
All right, and after that, was there, well, at least to your knowledge, was there any further investigation though?
I believe there was further investigation, I wasn't, I, yes, there was.
Okay, and at some point, were you aware that the matter was passed over to Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay, and did you get contacted by anybody after it went over to Town Hall?
Yes.
And who was that?
It was the, it was with the, it was a private attorney, Chris Kenny, or whoever the town had, working for them at the time, Chris Kenny.
Okay, and that, somebody outside of the town, is that who did the investigation?
Who?
Bad question, sorry. Sorry. Did you talk to somebody from a law firm?
Correct, yes, I did.
All right, and was this an interview that was conducted by Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
And as a result of that interview, was there any statement that you had to sign? Let me backtrack and explain, did, did he create a document that, that memorialized what you told him, and he had you review and sign off on it?
I don't, I don't recall that.
Okay, but you did sit with him for an interview, right?
Correct.
And did you hear anything further about the investigation after you had that interview with him?
No, I did not.
Okay, so you never found out what, what the end result of the investigation was?
No, I don't, I don't think so, I think I asked, but I never found out.
Okay, who did you ask?
I asked the union attorney. That's how I recall it, I asked the union attorney because he was involved due to others' situations at the time.
Okay, and, but Mr. Williams didn't tell you what happened with the investigation, right?
No.
And nobody else over at Town Hall told you what the end result of the investigation was, right?
No, no, the way I remember it was my last interaction regarding that was with Chris Kenny.
Okay. All right, now, let's talk about a different incident. Sorry to jump around a little there. At some point, and I hope you can give us some idea when, you had a conversation with Chief Thompson in the dispatch area, I believe it was, relevant to this particular matter, right?
Relevant to Farm Road?
No, not Farm Road, this, this investigation here, the, the hearing that's involving the chief?
Yes.
Okay, I've jumped ahead to something else, I'm just trying to refocus. Okay, so this particular conversation took place in the police station, right?
Yes.
And can you, can you tell us when this was? As best you can remember?
Maybe, I would be, my best guess would be possibly, if it's a conversation I believe you're talking about, I believe it was maybe July of last year, summer of last year, I think, possibly.
Okay, I'm talking about the conversation that, that's the comment that's at the part of this investigation, so is that the one that, we're both talking about the same conversation?
Yes, yes.
And you think it was in the summer of last year?
I, I think so, that would be my best guess.
Okay, did you make any notes at the time?
I did not.
Okay, so your, your best guess at this point is that it was sometime in the summer?
Yes.
And can you tell us what happened in terms of how the conversation came about?
Yes, the way I recall it is that we were sitting in dispatch and we were having a conversation about union matters, and a member of another union came up, and I was saying that that union member wasn't going through me, they tend to go through a different union member of the Sherburne Police Union, and then there was some other conversation about some of that union member's behavior, and so that's kind of what led up to the comment, there were some comments about her.
Okay, and at this time, do you, in the, when this conversation took place, and especially call in July of last year, July of 2019, did you have a position with the police union?
Yes.
Okay, what was your position?
I'm the Secretary and Treasurer.
Okay, that, that was your position back then, right?
Correct.
You were talking to the chief about union matters that were of interest to you and your union, right?
Yes, just like fundraising type stuff, I believe.
Okay. Why, was there an upcoming fundraiser or something?
I was thinking that I wanted to try to do something different, and I wasn't getting feedback on it.
Okay, and so you were talking to the chief about that?
Yes.
Okay, and other, during the course of this union conversation, other topics came up, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, so what, what was the conversation you had with the chief on this particular matter, this particular point? Your best memory? That's all we can ask for, is your best memory?
We were just talking about, I, I mean, I don't know how specific I can get with, but we were talking about the different departments a little bit, and specific members of the departments, and I said some things about possibly...
Were you talking about interaction with other union members someplace else?
Yeah, I just don't want to like name people, I'm not sure what I'm, like, I'm allowed to.
Well, let me try to prompt you. All right, so you're having a conversation, and you were talking to the chief about interaction with other union members, other non-police union members?
Yes.
Right, okay, and the chief said something, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and I'm not trying to hide anything here, it's just, what did he say?
He said, he said that the reason why that, that person didn't like me, or didn't want to go through me, was because I was better looking than they were, younger and better looking, or something along those lines.
Okay, and did you say anything?
Yes, I said, I responded with something, well, yeah, I said that I didn't really think my appearance had much to do with it, and that I was just more professional, and I don't want to sound mean, but I said I was more professional and, and more educated, and handled calls better.
And did the chief agree with that?
Yes.
And did you say anything else to the chief about that?
No, that was, I don't, no, no, not that I know of.
Okay, and did he say anything else about it to you?
No.
All right, and did the conversation move on to other topics?
I think so.
Well, did it end there?
No, I'm sure we talked for a few more minutes, and then it started as like a casual conversation, and it ended as a casual, casual conversation.
All right, and you were in dispatch because you were working the desk?
Correct.
All right.
Yes.
And so, my guess is, and tell me if I'm right or wrong, the chief is the one that left dispatch to, to go do something else?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that was the extent of your interaction on this topic, right?
Yes.
And, and you never talked to the chief or he to you about that again since, right?
No.
Now, since you've been at the Department, Officer Bush, have you been able to go to, well, we know, the legal profession call continuing legal education, but it's in-service training for police officers?
Yes.
Okay, and some of this in-service training involves specialized topics in schools, right?
Correct.
Okay, in the, in the three years or so that you've been there, what kinds of schools have you had the opportunity to go to?
Besides in-service training, like additional extra trainings, are you asking?
Right, every year you do 40 hours because that's mandated, right?
Correct, yes.
And that's in-service, and it's refresh your topics and firearms and things like that?
Yes.
Okay, so besides that, what other kinds of things have you been able to go to?
I've been very fortunate, I've been able to go to sexual assault investigations, training, I've been to crime prevention through environmental design, I've been through FTO school, I've been through officer in charge training, I've been through RAD class.
What is RAD for those that aren't familiar with that acronym?
Rape Aggression Defense.
Okay. OIC training, what, explain that.
Officer in Charge.
And FTO?
Field Training Officer.
Okay, so in addition to those, have you gone to any others?
I have. I'm kind of blanking out right now, I've done some special impaired driving trainings. I said crime prevention through environmental design. I have been to a few others, oh, I've been to some hate crime officer trainings.
Okay, and in connection with those things, is that something that you become aware of through the chief?
Sometimes, yes.
Does he usually circulate emails related to upcoming trainings and ask if anybody wants to attend?
Sometimes, yes.
Okay. And how, other than through the chief, how do you learn about some of these classes and schools?
Through my own research, or just being aware of them from being in the field.
All right. And when you've asked to attend different things, has, has the chief permitted it?
Yes.
Okay, has he denied you any training?
Not that I can recall.
And are some of these things not handled in-house, but other places around the state and the country?
Yes.
And are other officers in the department also able to attend outside classes and these kinds of trainings?
Yes.
And is it your experience in the three years you've been there, the chief often circulates things by emails that he thinks might be of interest to some of the officers in the department?
Yes.
And these can be anything from articles in law enforcement journals, to legal updates, to what else would he circulate, or does he circulate?
Just basically what you covered, anything that he thinks the department should be aware of, changes that are going on in the department, daily like news feeds, stuff of that nature.
All right, and this, the, just trying to pinpoint a couple of incidents here, that may or may not be relevant to Mara Gallagher's report, but you, you said you attended RAD training. Where was that?
That was in Dunstable, Mass.
Okay, and when was that, approximately?
That was October 2018.
All right, you said that you attended a crime prevention through environmental design program. Where was that?
February, where was it?
Where?
It was in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Okay, that was in Las Vegas. And when was that?
Superbowl, February 2019.
Okay. And the FTO school, when was that?
That was last, I can't, I can't remember the date of that exactly, but that was in Andover.
How about?
Best year at some point.
What season?
Fall, I believe.
Fall?
Yeah, I believe, fall or winter, yes, of last year.
Of 19?
I think so, yes.
Okay, and the OIC school?
January 27th of 2019. Or...
This year, right?
This year, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Where was that held?
That was in Hudson, Mass.
Okay. How about the impaired driving school?
Where? That was, oh, that was probably when I first started.
So it was back 17 sometime?
Yeah. Yes.
All right, and the hate crime courses, or seminar?
Probably last winter, at, at least one of them.
Okay.
And then I think one this past spring.
Okay, so you've had that a couple of times.
Yeah, they're usually like a daily training, because every department has to have a mandated hate crime officer, so that's wholesome.
In Sherburne, that's you?
Correct.
How about the sexual assault school? When did you do that?
It was probably 2018. I, I just don't have all the dates right in front of me.
That's okay, I'm just looking for your best memory, do, do you remember where it was?
Yeah, that was in Boston.
Okay. All right. And again, just your best memory, okay? Now, you, you gave me a specific date for the OIC school, and why, why does that stand out for you?
Because that is the day, that's the day that I had a conversation with a supervisor and Dave Williams.
Okay, and this particular supervisor, and Mr. Williams, where did the conversation take place?
At the Town Hall.
All right, and was that after you had returned from the school?
Yes, right after.
What, what time did you get back from that particular class?
I would say, I had to have coverage for a few minutes, so it was sometime probably around 3:30.
And how were you alerted to the conversation at the Town Hall?
That supervisor.
And well?
The supervisor contacted me via phone.
Okay, and when?
When I was driving back from the OIC school.
All right, so on your way back from Hudson, you get a phone call from this particular supervisor, right?
Correct.
Okay, and what, what did the supervisor say?
That he and, that him and Dave Williams were together, and that if I wanted to have a conversation, it would be a good time to have that conversation.
All right, did you reply to that?
I did.
What was your reply?
I think I said something along the lines that I had desk, I had desk duties, and I think he said that he could get them covered.
Okay, and what happened after that?
I eventually ended up going over to the Town Hall.
Okay, and what happened after you get to the Town Hall?
Um, I was met, I, I don't remember if, I don't remember exactly how it happened, but I, I had previously expressed, I, I had expressed some concerns to that supervisor about the stuff that we'd shared, and, because I had trusted him, and I, but I didn't say I wanted to expand it at all, I just wanted to be clear about that. And so I was met over there by Dave Williams and that supervisor.
Okay, and after you got there, what happened?
I don't exactly remember how the conversation started, but they asked if I, somehow I, if I wanted to talk or whatever, and the conversation started actually about a new hire that we had. And it was like a completely separate thing, and then some of the more sensitive stuff got brought up, and I was reluctant to talk, and I, I wouldn't at first, and then Dave Williams promised me that the conversation was completely off the record. And that I, and I didn't speak about any of it until I was promised it was off the record.
Okay, and what did you tell him when it was off the record?
Just basically about the comment in dispatch, I can't remember word for word the conversation, the comment in dispatch, the, the email, basically pretty much, the email, the comment in dispatch, sorry.
Okay, I'm just looking for what, what's your best memory of the conversation is? Okay, well, before, back to that, did you take notes during the conversation?
I did not.
All right, did, did you see anybody else taking notes?
No, and I was, that they weren't going to be taking notes.
Okay, so what, what's your best memory? And Officer Bush, just relax, okay, take your time, all right, we're not going anywhere. So there was the... So there was the comment that we already talked about, right? All right.
Sorry, can I have, can I have five minutes?
Okay with me, I don't know about Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm fine with a five minute break. Thank you. Absolutely. 7:10. All right, we're back.
All right. I think where we were, Officer Bush, is you had this meeting with Mr. Williams and the supervisor. They told you it was off the record, and you talked about a number of things. Just to kind of speed things up, the you've read the report that was created by Mara Gallagher in connection with this, right?
Correct, yes.
All right, and in there it lists about six individual topics that were discussed at this meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, and I think they were discussed, but not all of them came from you, right?
Correct.
All right, so after this meeting you had at town hall, what's the next thing that happened in connection with these particular investigation and discussion?
Started getting, Dave Williams started reaching out to me.
Reaching out to you for what?
He asked me to speak to Mara Gallagher. And regarding the complaint process.
Okay, and how did he reach out to you?
Via text.
All right, and what did you do?
I didn't respond. I believe I responded initially saying I didn't want to go forward, or I don't remember exactly what I said, something along those lines, and then it got too much, and I just stopped answering.
What do you mean by too much?
They were just long text messages, and it was like, I was too much, I kind of, I felt pressured. And I just and I just didn't want to go forward with the anything that we talked about in the office that day.
All right.
That my understanding was that I wouldn't need to, and that seemed to be changing.
Okay, is that something that Mr. Williams told you that the decision was yours to make?
Yes.
All right, and?
And initially, sorry.
Go ahead, I didn't mean, go ahead and finish your answer.
That was my understanding when I left his office, and I believe in the text messages, he said that it was in my control as well.
Okay, and so you informed him that you didn't want to do anything further, right?
Yes, and then I just stopped answering.
Okay, and what happened after you stopped answering?
I was contacted by Mara Gallagher.
And what did she say? Well, before that, she contacted you how?
On the phone.
So she called you?
Yes.
And what did she say?
She basically said that she had gotten my information from the Farm Road Report, and she had spoken to Dave Williams. It wasn't a very friendly conversation.
Well, the conversation you had with Mara Gallagher or her conversation with David Williams was not very friendly?
My conversation with Mara Gallagher was not very friendly.
Okay, and in what way was it not very friendly?
I was just really caught off guard because I thought that it was, that I had control over this information, and it felt like it was taken away from me, and I felt like it escalated beyond where I wanted to go, and I didn't feel comfortable speaking with her. I had no desire to speak with her, and I made that very clear to her.
And then what happened?
She said she would be following up, and I don't remember exactly how many phone calls. There was at least one or two more that I did not respond to. With her trying to make contact with me regarding the investigation. And I at one point asked her why, what happens if I don't sit down and speak with you? And I don't remember her exact terminology, but she said that I could be ordered to, or there could be repercussions for not cooperating.
Okay, and was that her word repercussions?
I don't know exactly what her word was.
What was your understanding of what she told you?
That I could be in trouble if I didn't, if I was flat out refusing to speak to. That was an investigation.
And so what did you do next?
I contacted Ryan, the union attorney at that point in time.
All right, and after you did that, just you said that the initial meeting was January 27th. Can you give me a timeframe or an approximation when you first got a phone call from Mara Gallagher?
Mid, mid to mid February, I think. Mid to the end of February.
Okay. And can you tell me when you first contacted Mr. Murphy with the union?
I'm sorry, that's not correct. I I was getting contacted by Dave Williams mid to end of February, and I would say end end of the month. Between March was the pressure from Mara.
Okay, so towards the end of February?
Yes.
All right. And it was at that point, towards the end of February, that you contacted Mr. Murphy, Attorney Murphy?
Correct, because I realized that this was becoming an issue.
All right, now, after you contacted Attorney Murphy, at some point you sat down with Mara Gallagher and Attorney Murphy, right?
That's correct.
And when was that?
March 6.
March 6, and was that an in-person sit-down?
It was, yes.
Okay, so there was no, was there, well, I shouldn't do that, was there any social distancing and COVID precautions?
Absolutely not.
Okay, and where did that take place?
I can't remember the name of the place. It was in Medfield, like a sports club, tennis club or something. I don't remember the name of it.
All right, and about how long did that last?
Several hours.
And after that meeting, did Mara Gallagher come back to you with a summary of what was talked about and ask you to review it?
No, she did not.
Did she give you any kind of statement to review and sign?
No, she did not.
Did you hear from her again?
I personally did not. I think she may have reached out to Ryan one more time, saying that she wanted to do a follow-up interview, but then it never happened.
And so after that sit-down with Mara Gallagher at the beginning of March, what's the next thing you heard about the investigation?
The next thing I heard about this investigation was well, from the town, or from, I heard from Ryan. And then I heard from I think really in regards, the next thing I heard was from the town was from a supervisor.
Okay, and when was that?
The Saturday before the last meeting.
So a little over a week ago?
Correct, yes.
And is this the same supervisor that was at the meeting with David Williams in January?
Yes.
Okay, and what did you hear from that supervisor?
That I needed to contact the town attorney.
Okay. And was there anything else from the supervisor?
Yes, we had, we had a little bit of an exchange regarding it.
Oh, what do you mean, a little bit of exchange?
I asked why I needed to speak to the town attorney. And I said, for what? And he said to talk about, this is not verbatim, this is just kind of, I, he said to talk about what had, what I had told chief's attorney, and I said I had not spoken to chief's attorney.
Meaning me, right?
Correct, yes, yes, sir.
At that time, had we set up a meeting for the following Monday through Mr. Murphy?
I don't know if it was set up, and I think it may have been set up, but I don't know if it was set with time and everything for the following Monday.
Okay. So you told him that you hadn't spoken to me yet?
I'm sorry, say it again?
You told the supervisor that you hadn't spoken to me?
Correct, because I hadn't spoken to you.
Okay, and then what did he say?
I think I said again that I had not spoken to you, and said that the town didn't need, and I asked again why I needed to speak to the attorney, and he said that the town didn't need to or the, I didn't need to blindside the town on Thursday night. And I said again that I didn't speak to the attorney. He asked if I was asked to, and I said yes, but I hadn't.
And how did that conversation make you feel?
I contacted Ryan right away, and I said that I didn't think, I felt like I probably shouldn't talk to you. Because I was concerned about retaliation at that point.
Okay, and has has there been any retaliation because you spoke to me?
No, not, not, no, not yet. No, there hasn't been, sorry.
But eventually, we did manage to speak, right?
Correct.
And Beverly, in just a moment. Officer Bush, in your meeting with Mara Gallagher, did you have a discussion with her about your fear of retaliation? By anyone in the department?
I did.
I'm sorry?
Not, not, I don't recall specifically having a conversation about retaliation from anyone in the department at that time.
Okay, did you indicate that you thought anyone would retaliate against you for talking to her?
No, I stated that I, I expressed that I was concerned about retaliation of this nature, just for being a female officer in a male-dominated field. And I was concerned that how I would look, and it wasn't about anything in particular, and I was concerned about my career. And I was concerned for exactly what's happening right now with on public display like this.
Okay, and what's your feeling about that? Particularly what Mara Gallagher put in her report about you and your fears?
I think that I wasn't properly represented in that report. I think that my privacy was completely disregarded. I think that some things were left out, and I think that a general concern for my well-being was not taken into consideration at all during this entire process.
Is there anything else you want to say about the report, how you were portrayed?
I just think that, that there was a lot of assumptions made regarding with how I felt about things and what I was okay with being shared, and there was a lot of conversations articulated in that report that I wasn't a part of, and I think some things that I wanted to share weren't put in the report. I felt like I was reluctant to meet with her, and I think she knew that, and I was reluctant to meet with her because at that point in time, I felt like I was being used as a pawn by the town, and I was frustrated.
All right, do you still feel frustrated?
I am very, yes, I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I promised you an opportunity to say your, say what you want. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
I, I think that that's, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to question first?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Good evening, Officer Bush. I won't be long. Are you familiar with the town's equal employment opportunity policy?
Familiar, oh, hold on, sorry, familiar? In what sense? I know we have one.
Right, and you've been given the policy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you understand that when any employee brings forward concerns that they might be treated differently, or that they're uncomfortable, that the town's obligated to investigate, correct?
Yes.
And so when you brought concerns to your supervisor, particularly about number one, the chief, he was obligated to report those concerns, wouldn't you agree?
Yes.
And in doing so, he reported to the town administrator, correct?
Yes.
And then the town administrator is obligated to do something to investigate, to make sure that all employees feel comfortable, correct?
Yes.
And so in this case, they hired an outside investigator who's Mara Gallagher, correct?
Yes.
And before tonight, you and I have never spoken, correct?
Correct.
And Attorney Joyce had asked you questions about a conversation you had with your supervisor about speaking with me and my wanting to know allegedly what you said to your attorney, correct?
Yes.
And when you spoke, you spoke with Attorney Joyce, correct?
On Monday, yeah.
Did he show you the email that I sent looking to speak with you?
Yes.
And in that email, I didn't say anything about wanting to know what you told Attorney Joyce, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to speak with you as a town employee about the, your testimony, correct?
Correct.
We didn't speak, correct?
Correct.
And Attorney Joyce has given you a copy of Ms. Gallagher's investigation report, correct?
I think, I believe I got it from Ryan, but I have, yes.
Your attorney, correct?
Yes.
And in the comments that Attorney Gallagher attributes to you on comments that the chief made about you concerning your looks, does she correctly or accurately depict the comments in that report?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Not said so well. In your review of the reports, I'll just go through just the three categories, so to speak. So you talked about a comment that you had made, or the chief had made about you at dispatch, and that's contained in Mara Gallagher's report, correct?
Yes.
And you spoke with Mara Gallagher about that, correct?
Yes.
And she attributes statements to you in that report on that regard, correct?
Yes.
And are those accurately reflected in the report by Ms. Gallagher?
Those ones are, yes.
And so other than, I'm putting aside your concerns that she characterized that you were fearful of retaliation, the issues that you spoke with her about regarding what you spoke with Dave Williams about, so your looks, and then there was an issue about uh, what you spoke with Dave Williams about, so, um, your looks, and then there was an issue about, um, you're being placed on the day shift, and then one other issue about, um, uh, an email that was sent to you concerning sexual harassment, do you recall those three topics?
Yes.
And you recall those in the report?
Yes.
And did Mara Gallagher correctly attribute statements to you in those three categories in the report?
I'm not sure which, no.
Okay, which ones didn't she accurately reflect?
She, she, I believe it was the one about the day shift. One, I, I believe, I made a comment saying that I believe that Chief in his way was looking out for my benefit, or my best interest, I don't, I don't know exactly how it worded it, but it was left out of the report.
But you never asked for a day shift, correct?
No.
And you never, um, asked for any type of accommodation based on any personal or family issue, correct?
No.
And in fact, you had asked, uh, to be given more supervisory responsibility, be able to do an OIC, work as an officer in charge, correct? I don't have any other questions. I'll turn it over to the chair, um, see if the board has any questions.
Are there any questions from the board members? I'll just make a statement to thank you for your testimony, and, um, and, uh, I can only imagine it's difficult, and thank you for coming, coming before us. I had just one question myself, um, you know, you've read the report, there's kind of, um, ten items in here, there's one that's kind of a bit more subjective. It talks about, um, workplace environment under the chief, about a negative workplace environment. Was it your experience that, um, under Chief Thompson, there was a, a culture of fear and paranoia, and that there was a negative workplace environment under, uh, Chief Thompson?
No.
Okay, that's my only question. So, at this point, and again, thank you for your testimony. At this point, I believe it's, uh, back to you, Attorney Joyce?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, I called Chief Thompson, but I don't know if, uh, anybody wants to take a quick break, because that's going to take a little bit, or you want to take a break later on?
What are the feelings among the board members? Jeff, could you unmute all the board members?
I'm working on it, they have to.
I think we should keep going, we just had a break like half an hour ago.
I agree with George.
Okay.
Don't think we'll go with that, okay, we'll keep going.
Chief Thompson?
I think you're unmuted too, Rick, I believe now.
There's Chuck. I am, can you hear me? Yes.
We can hear you. All right. Just wait the witness, then I'll start.
Oh, sorry. Do you swear, let's move in the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, for the record, state your name, please.
Richard R. Thompson III.
And, uh, what's your current employment?
I am currently employed by the Towne Sherman as the chief of police.
How long have you been the chief?
A little over eleven years.
All right, now, um, the, uh, Sherman Police Department consists of how many patrolmen?
Um, I believe, um, eleven, maybe twelve.
How many sergeants?
Two.
How many lieutenants?
One.
And then just the one chief?
Correct.
Nothing be, no rank between lieutenant and the chief, right?
Correct.
And is, how long has that been the command structure for the department?
Um, the lieutenant's position was introduced probably after my fourth or fifth year in the police department.
All right, and what, what are the lieutenant's functions?
Um, the lieutenant is my administrative lieutenant, um, handles payroll, handles training, um, he's responsible to, um, report to me, um, with internal matters. He has acted, um, in my absence as, as chief when I go on vacation or, or take some time off.
Okay, and, uh, this, two sergeants, do they have different responsibilities?
They have, um, uh, formal patrol supervisor responsibilities, uh, but both also share a very similar responsibilities that Lieutenant Pendleton does.
Okay, what, in, in what way?
Um, so Sergeant Tedstone, um, has, uh, also acted in, in, uh, my role when I've been on, away on days off. Sergeant Tenstone has, uh, completed payroll and handled, um, scheduling of officers, scheduling of, um, time off shifts, um, much like the, the lieutenant would, and, um, I would say the same for Sergeant David Melty.
All right, and, um, at, uh, some point in the past, uh, you became aware of an incident that occurred on Farm Road in October of 2019?
I did.
Okay, and, uh, how did that first come to your attention?
Um, I received a phone call, um, am I allowed to share names?
Are you talking about from one of the witnesses that's testified?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, one of the witnesses that has testified had called me, um, that evening of the incident, um, and they were, they were very upset.
Okay, and was that a police department employee?
No.
All right, and, um, what did you do after you got that phone call?
Um, I, I had a, maybe a five-minute conversation with that employee. Um, I told them that they should, um, bring their issue to their supervisor's attention, uh, which was Chief Kenny. And I told, um, that person that, uh, we would, uh, discuss it further, uh, in the future.
Okay, and what happened next with regard to that, that particular incident?
Uh, I went to work, uh, the following morning, and, um, Sergeant Tenstone briefed me, um, on what occurred, uh, at Farm, on Farm Road.
Okay, and, uh, what did you do after your sergeant briefed you?
I immediately notified, um, David Williams, the town administrator, um, Diane Moore is the assistant town administrator, Darren Klein, town council, and Chief Aaron Kenny, that I had received a preliminary complaint, um, from one of my officers.
Okay, and then what's the next thing that you did?
Um, I was, I received some direction, uh, from the town administrator with respect to the personal administration plan. I communicated with Chief Kenny, uh, we ran a parallel, parallel investigation. As we were running the parallel investigation, there was information that, um, we had both gathered that led me to believe that some of the issues had risen to the level of criminal activity.
Okay, what did you do then?
Um, I continued to communicate, uh, the information that was being gathered. Um, in fact, I, I forwarded, uh, pretty much every step that I took, uh, to the town administrator and assistant town administrator. Um, I ultimately, uh, we, Chief Kenny and I gathered, uh, statements, um, reports. The statements that I took, um, I actually had the, uh, both, um, witnesses, uh, who are not police department employees, meet with me in my office, I had them go over their statements, I asked that they, um, review the, their statements for fact, I asked them to, you know, uh, share with me whether I made any mistakes, if they want to add anything, if they wanted to detract anything. Uh, and ultimately, I asked them to sign the date, um, their statements, which, which both did. I then, um, communicated again with the town administrator, I explained that, um, I had reached out to, uh, the supervisor at the Millsus District Attorney's Office for an opinion. I requested that, uh, the, uh, town administrator provide me with any, uh, statements that he had received, any reports that he had completed, or, um, any discussions that he had had with any involved parties.
Okay, and it, that's, uh, and I know you have a copy of the exhibit book there, um, exhibit twenty-eight?
Yes.
All right, and contained in exhibit twenty-eight is, uh, your email?
Uh, several of my emails.
Okay, but specifically the one you were just talking about, referring to, uh, Mr. Williams and requesting additional information from him?
Correct.
And what, what was the date of that?
It was, um, Thursday, uh, October twenty-fourth at three fifty-two PM.
All right, and did you hear back from Mr. Williams?
I did.
And is that the, uh, next email in that exhibit?
It is.
And when did he respond to you?
On Friday, November first, uh, two thousand nineteen at twelve twenty-nine PM.
Okay, so, um, I know Thursday, Friday, but it's a week later, right?
Correct.
Okay. And now, uh, at some point, you, well, let me, let me go back, so after you, um, got the reply from Mr. Williams, what did you do in connection with the investigation?
Um, I forwarded, uh, all the documents that Chief Kenny and I had, um, collected, uh, to District Attorney's Office, and, uh, I got a response, um, with the information that I had requested.
All right, now, during the course of this investigation, did you and Chief Kenny consult with each other about the next steps?
Yes.
Uh, and is this the first investigation you, uh, conducted of this nature with regard to the activities of town employees or town officials?
No.
Okay, and in the past, uh, how many of those have you done before this one?
I'd have to say at least six.
Okay, and, uh, as far as the course of the investigation, did you, uh, do anything different here than you had done in the prior investigations?
No.
Okay, and those investigations, had you also consulted with the District Attorney's Office during the course of the investigation?
A few of them I had.
All right, now, after you consulted with the District Attorney's Office, what did you do here?
Um, I followed the direction of the town administrator, um, I used my discretion. Um, I didn't think it was in the best interest of the community to, uh, go forward with criminal complaints. Um, I forwarded all of my, uh, documents that I had received, um, to the town administrator and the assistant town administrator, which included, um, again, direction from the town administrator, highlights from, uh, what I believe to be, um, violations of the town's conduct policy.
All right, and, uh, just to go back, uh, in, in connection with this, you were interviewed by Mara Gallagher about this particular topic, weren't you?
I was.
Okay, among many, but this one in particular, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, a- at the time you were doing this investigation, um, you were aware of the directive from the board not to have direct contact with this particular employee?
I was, yes.
And you, and you didn't have any direct contact with that particular employee, did you?
I did not.
All right, and were you aware of Chief Kenny's, uh, attempts to contact him?
Yes.
All right, and, you know, Chief Kenny told you, didn't he?
He did.
All right, Chief Kenny was under no bar from contacting him, was he?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, so, um, at some point, there was a discussion with, uh, Attorney Gallagher about when, if at all, you would try to contact this employee, right?
Correct.
And, and what was that discussion?
Uh, Attorney Gallagher, uh, asked me if I had interviewed, um, that particular town employee.
Right, and obviously you hadn't, so?
Correct.
How'd she follow up on that?
Um, she asked me, um, uh, whether or not I thought that there were, um, any, uh, criminal, uh, crimes involved uh, in what we had learned, and I said, I said I did, uh, that's why I, uh, had reached out to the District Attorney's Office for opinion. And I told, uh, Attorney Gallagher that I used my discretion, that I chose not to interview, um, that particular party. Um, I also shared that, um, that particular party had had a discussion with both, uh, uh, the town administrator, David Williams, and the assistant town administrator, Diane Moore's. And I, and I explained that if I had decided to move forward with, uh, a criminal complaint, that I would have afforded that particular town, uh, employee the opportunity to be audio and video recorded.
Okay, and is that something that is, uh, usual or standard practice in your departmental investigations of crimes?
It is.
Okay. And was that accurately reflected in her summary report?
No, Attorney Gallagher misrepresented what I said.
Okay, um, in, in, so, just to distill that, could, could you explain that in a way that, uh, is, is clear in terms of your contact with this particular employee? And the speculation as to whether you would or wouldn't contact them?
Yes, as I, uh, testified, um, I, I chose not to, uh, seek criminal complaints, and therefore did not interview that particular, um, employee, and, um, as I, as I said earlier, had I decided to do that, um, I would have audio and video recorded that employee. And if I had decided to take out criminal complaints, uh, much like I did throughout the, this entire process, I would have included the town administrator and assistant town administrator in, in those decisions.
But, uh, there was no prosecution, and you shipped everything over to Town Hall, right?
Correct.
Okay, were you ever told what hap, what happened, uh, after it went over to Town Hall?
No.
All right, um, were you aware at all of, uh, the additional investigation conducted by Chris Kenny of Clifford and Kenny?
Um, I was made aware, um, that the town administrator, um, had decided to, um, forward the investigation, investigate a packet, um, off to, uh, Attorney Jamie Kenny from Clifford and Kenny, I, I believe there's an email, uh, somewhere.
In exhibit twenty-eight, if you look. I believe that's the final email.
Correct.
Okay, and, um, after that email, were you made aware of any result of that investigation by Attorney Kenny?
No.
All right, so, uh, let me ask you something, in, in the police department, you get complaints from civilians and other people about police employees, right?
Correct.
All right, and, um, during the course of, of handling those complaints, uh, once the decision is reached, does the department do anything as far as notifying the complainant?
Yes, we, we communicate the findings of the investigation to the complainant.
Uh, and what's the purpose of letting the complainant know what happened with the investigation?
Well, it's a, it's a demonstration of, um, trust in the police department, and trust by, by the community. Persons that make complaints, uh, against police officers should feel comfortable, um, knowing that we're going to take that complaint seriously, that we're going to investigate the complaints to our best of, uh, to the best of our abilities, and that we're going to follow up with them and, and explain, uh, whether or not, uh, the complaint was founded, unfounded, whether or not there were any policies or procedures violated, and ultimately whether or not there was any disciplinary action taken, or, or, uh, maybe retraining.
Okay, so, there, there is a reason why you let the complainant know that, uh, the complaint has been handled in a certain way, correct?
Correct.
All right, now, in this particular instance, according to, uh, one of the emails in, uh, exhibit twenty-eight, um, um, looking at the one dated November eighth, uh, when you sent the material over to Mr. Williams, right, and you copied, uh, your officer, uh, Mr. Marl and Chief Kenny, right?
Correct.
All right. And, uh, that indicates that you were the complainant on this particular incident, it's based on Mr. Williams's earlier email to you, right?
Correct.
All right, now, why were you the complainant in this particular case?
Because when I, when I spoke with, uh, Officer Bush, um, dur- during the investigative process, um, she, she had, uh, uh, she had some concerns about, um, not being the, the, um, not being the, the kind of focus of the complaint. She said some concerns about the political atmosphere, and ultimately, I, I just shared with Officer Bush that I would be making the complaint on her behalf because she was not the only complainant, and she was not the only victim in, in this particular situation.
All right, so as the technical complainant here, you received no notification as to disposition of the investigation?
I did not.
And is your, your understanding, or, or, let me ask you, do you know where the Chief Kenny was informed of the result of the investigation?
I do not know that.
All right, yeah, were you made aware that the, the employee also filed the complaint against another fire department employee as a result of this incident?
I was not aware of that.
Okay, when did you first learn it?
I, I believe recently, when you, you made me aware of it.
Okay. All right, Chief, I would direct your attention. Let's move on to something else. Let's, let's talk a little bit about the conversation that you had with Officer Graziano. Okay, that he, he testified earlier a little bit about, can you tell us as best you can recall when you spoke with him?
I, I believe I spoke with Officer Graziano right around October, November of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, and you recall his, his testimony, I assume, as to how the conversation came about, right?
Yes.
Okay, and i- is that your memory of how you and he usually talked?
Yes.
All right, and can you tell us what, as best you can recall, your conversation with him that day?
To the best of my recollection, Officer Graziano came to speak to me and wanted to share a few concerns involving one of my officers. We had a discussion about that concern. He also made me aware of an additional concern involving another officer. This is very difficult to explain this without sharing names, but I obviously respect people's privacy. He shared that another one of my officers had interacted, so to speak, with the original officer, and Officer Graziano was concerned, shared with me that the original officer had some concerns about the second officer discussing where they had seen each other. I guess that's the best way to explain it, and I'm sorry that's confusing, but that's, that's what happened.
Okay. And what else did you discuss with Officer Graziano?
We had more conversation about, I shared with them that I, I had never, as a chief anyway, had to handle something that he had shared with me involving one of the officers. He had shared with me that he was aware of an officer in a, in a adjoining community that was going through the same thing, and that they had made an accommodation to place that particular officer on, on a Monday through Friday schedule.
Okay, and was there anything else that, that you discussed with Officer Graziano?
I, I just said to Officer Graziano that, you know, I was concerned for, for, actually, obviously, both officers and what they were struggling with, and that I would do anything to, to help the original officer. I told him, excuse me, I told him that I would speak with Sergeant Tedstone, if I recall correctly, Sergeant Tedstone was working the shift that day, and that I would have Sergeant Tedstone work something out for, for that particular officer.
Okay, now, this particular conversation, did it touch on other topics besides these, what was going on with these two officers?
I, I'm sure it did. You know, I, I, you know, Officer Graziano and I run into each other. Most of the time, you know, we have casual conversations when, when we run into each other at shift change. There are times where, as the union president, he will send me an email and set up an appointment to see, see me about some, some critical issues. I, I do recall right around that same time that I had asked Officer Graziano to see me in my office, and I had asked him to shut the door because I wanted to discuss something that his mom had discussed with me, that was private to, to the Grazianos.
Okay, now, in terms of this particular conversation with Officer Graziano, were you taking notes?
No.
All right, and was he taking notes?
No.
Okay, and were other topics discussed besides these two officers and, and what was going on with them?
I'm sure there were.
Okay, do you recall any of them, any of those topics?
I don't.
Okay, now, when you spoke with Attorney Gallagher about this particular conversation, that was when? End of May?
End of May, yes.
All right, and at the end of May, you had been away from the department for how long?
Almost four and a half months.
All right, and before you spoke with her, did she provide you with any ideas to what the topics she was going to talk to you about were?
No.
Did she provide you with any documents to review before she spoke to you?
No.
Okay, did she give you any heads up at all about what the topics were going to be?
No.
All right, and did you have anything to do with the department during those four months?
No, I was isolated from the department.
All right, and when you spoke with her and she asked about this particular conversation, did you tell her your best memory of the conversation, as you recalled it, in May?
Yes.
All right, and the conversation had happened how many months previously?
Roughly seven, maybe eight.
Okay. Now, one of the things that, that she asked about was this other officer and, and how you handled that, as you just referenced. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And I want you to take a look at exhibit twenty-seven. The text messages?
Yes.
Okay, and as, as best you know, that's, that's the officer that we're talking about that memorializes that conversation that you had?
Yes.
All right, and it concerns some personal matter that you were talking to that officer about?
Correct.
All right. And I can and i- if, if you'll recall Mara Gallagher's testimony the other night, she seemed to put particular emphasis upon the fact that you claimed that you had offered this officer day shift, and that that wasn't true. Do you recall talking to Mara Gallagher about this particular second officer?
I do.
All right, and what did you tell Mara Gallagher?
I told Mara Gallagher that I had a conversation with this officer after, after she was asking me for example, examples of other personnel that I had provided accommodations for. And I was talking in generalities, and I brought up this particular conversation I had with this particular officer, and that he and his family were experiencing some, some issues. And I just, again, I was just using it as an example of me communicating with my people when they're experiencing problems at home. I never, never told Mara Gallagher that I offered this officer reasonable accommodation, because I did not.
Okay, what did you offer him?
I told him that I was here for he and his family, and that if he needed anything from me, that he knew how to get ahold of me.
Okay, and is that the same thing that's contained in that particular text message?
Pretty much, yes.
All right, and does it end in a similar way to the way that you told your, told Mara Gallagher your conversation with Amanda?
Yes.
And does the text message seem to indicate you had a conversation before the text message exchange?
It does.
Any reason to doubt that that's from the same officer that we're talking about here?
No, no doubt.
How long was the conversation here with Mara Gallagher?
Four and a half, almost five hours.
Okay. And you gave her a lot of information at that particular meeting, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, and did a lot of it end up in the report?
No.
All right, let's, let me redirect your attention, because I'm, I'm just looking at the charge letter here, Chief, as a way to kind of figure out some of the topics here. If you look at, and let me find the particular exhibit so you can look at it. Exhibit fourteen, I believe it is. Okay. Okay, you got that?
I do.
All right, and, and that's a particular email you sent that contains a link to a newspaper article, doesn't it?
Correct.
All right, and can you tell us what, what the purpose of the, the email and the link was?
Yes, it was a, a, a follow-up to a discussion that I had with that officer on or around the time that I believe she graduated the academy. And I sat and spoke with that officer and Sergeant Tedstone and discussed many issues that I inherited with respect to sexual harassment and an MCAT complaint. And that, that was a very difficult time in my career, and I just explained to her that, you know, if, if anything, like, if she were to experience anything like that, that, you know, I, I would expect that she, I would hope that she would have the, the courage and, and confidence to report something like that to me.
Okay, well, the, a- as you recall, Mara Gallagher's point, pointed out the lapse in timing here, because this is dated in two thousand nineteen, so what, what in particular motivated you to, to send this down?
I, I, I send daily clips from the Police Executive Research Forum to all of my personnel. When there are topics that jump out at me, that I feel are relevant to certain employees, for example, if something is discussed in the perp daily clips about firearms or Taser, I will extrapolate that particular article and forward it off to Sergeant Tedstone or Sergeant Nolte. If there's a particular subject that's in the perp daily clips that is, is specific to an investigative idea or, or how a certain investigative bureau handles certain crimes, I'd extrapolate that and send it directly to Detective Godino. In this particular case, this, this article jumped out at me, and it just, you know, instinctively, I just forwarded to Officer Bush as, as a follow-up to, to our original conversation.
Okay, well, you'll note that the, the embedded article deals with the resignation of the head of the Philadelphia Police with, based on harassment claims, and there's a certain irony that you're charged with sending that email in this particular case, isn't there?
There is.
So you, you're not supposed to send that, right?
Apparently not.
Okay. All right. I want to direct your attention to the conversation you had with Officer Bush in dispatch that she talked about earlier today, and that Mara Gallagher asked. And so when did, when did that take place, as best you can recall?
I, I believe Kelly, Officer Bush's recollection of, of, of the month is accurate.
Okay, and as to the conversation itself, what, what was the topic as to how it started? Well, before you, I, I gather she was working the desk in dispatch, and you came in for some reason, right?
Yeah, I, I, I do quite a bit of walking and talking with my personnel, and this particular day, I, I simply went in to just have a conversation with Officer Bush. We were talking about some of what, what she shared. She had some, you know, really good ideas about doing some things for fundraising for the association. I was sharing with her that, you know, what, you know, how I can support. Get some conversations about some other matters, work-related matters. And then we had a conversation about a particular employee in another department.
Okay, and give us your best memory of the conversation.
My, my best memory of, of how we had this conversation had to do with Officer Bush sharing an interaction that she had at a medical call with this particular employee, town employee.
Okay, but what was the, the conversation?
Officer Bush was upset that she had heard or, or learned that this employee was making negative comments about Officer Bush at a, at that department's training night.
Okay, and what did you say?
I, we had some more brief conversations. She, she shared some other comments, and I, I do not dispute what, what Officer Bush said, that I, I made a comment about Officer Bush, I thought it was being attractive, but I, I don't, you know, her, her recollection is, is probably better than mine, and it was something I shouldn't have said, and, you know, I'm, I'm embarrassed and apologetic for it.
Okay, now, was there anything else to the conversation?
No, we, we, what, what Officer Bush said was accurate, you know, after we spoke briefly about a, a few other issues with grievances and, and, and one of the, one of the other town employees. We spoke a little bit about some, some recent issues involving another department and some concerns that some of my officers were having with professionalism.
Okay, now, after that conversation with Officer Bush, did you talk about that with anyone else?
Not that I recall.
Okay, did anyone bring the conversation to your attention that you had spoken to them?
Yes.
And who was that?
That was Attorney Mara Gallagher.
And did she indicate what this conversation was at all?
Well, her question was, was confusing, because she had asked me if I had repeated this comment I made about Officer Bush's appearance to any other police department employee, and I told her that I did not recall having such a conversation. Attorney Gallagher had said to me on numerous occasions, she, she kept asking me if, if I had compared and contrasted Officer Bush to this other town employee. And I said, no, I had, I had not compared and contrasted, contrasted Officer Bush to this other employee. So when she asked me, she, she then brought to my, actually, she then stated to me that she had spoken with Officer Mitchell and Lieutenant Bento and that, and then she asked me if, if they had shared that I did, in fact, communicate this, this idea that I was comparing and contrasting Officer Bush to this other employee. She asked me what, what I would say to that. And I again said, I wasn't comparing and contrasting anybody. And then she asked me, well, if they said that that's what you were doing, would you say that they were lying? And I said, yes, if they said that I was comparing and contrasting Officer Bush to another employee, that they would be lying because that, I, I did not do that.
Okay, and this is after you told her you didn't recall that conversation?
Correct.
Talking to either of those officers, right?
Correct.
Okay. So today, do you have any recollection of talking to either of those officers?
I do not.
All right. Chief, retaliation has kind of reared its ugly head as a concern during this, this hearing. In fact, you're charged with creating a culture of fear of retaliation. Can you address that? Is that a culture that you created?
No.
And have you done anything to try to assure police department employees that there will be no retaliation?
Yes.
And what have you done?
I've sent, I've sent plenty of emails out about those type of issues. I've enjoyed a strong working relationship with the current union president, the past union president. All the, all of my personnel know what I expect and what I demand. And there has never been an allegation made about me in the 11 years I've been here until now, that I demonstrated any type of retaliatory behavior toward any employee.
And when, when your officers are involved in incidents within town, for example, the farm road incident, do you try to support them as best you can?
Of course I do.
And how do you, how do you do that?
By speaking with them, counseling them, having them explain, you know, how, how they feel, having them share, you know, their, their concerns. And in this particular incident, there, there was some serious concern shared, not only the, the night of, but the morning after. And I felt an obligation to protect my employee.
All right, now, Chief, just to go back to, to farm road for a moment, you initially made Mr. Williams and, and Ms. Moore's and Darren Klein aware of the complaints that you had received and, you know, that there was an issue with regard to that incident, correct?
Correct.
All right, now, and during the course of you, your and Chief Kenny's inquiries into that incident, you continue to keep Mr. Williams abreast of what was going on in terms of what you were doing, right?
I did.
Okay, did you keep anybody else in that particular loop?
The Assistant Town Administrator, the Fire Chief.
And at any point, did either the Town Administrator or the Assistant Town Administrator tell you to stop what you were doing?
No.
How about initially, when you alerted Darren Klein, did he tell you to stop?
No.
Did he tell you you shouldn't do that?
No.
Let me ask you about something that Sergeant Tedstone said the other night with regard to your assistance to other employees. He indicated that there were a few he was aware of. Were there others?
Yes.
And can you kind of quantify that for us as best you can?
Sure. I provided it an accommodation for the lieutenant when he suffered an off-duty injury. I provided an accommodation for an officer who very recently injured, injured himself off-duty with a firearm. I was approached by Sergeant Tedstone back in the winter of 2019. And he had shared with me that one of, the, one of my other employees were, was, is experiencing some family issues. And Sergeant Tedstone had asked, was not requested directly via this employee, Sergeant Tedstone asked if, if we could do something for that employee. And I, in fact, provided an accommodation. And I know I'm missing one or two, but there, there are a few others over there. I mean, I've been in there 11 years, so we've had issues there with, with people, you know, having injuries and having some, some issues.
Chief Thompson, is there anything, let me get back, you, you've had a chance to read Mara Gallagher's report here, right? I had a chance to read the charge letter, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there anything in Attorney Gallagher's report that you want to address that I haven't already covered?
Give me a minute or two to review a few things. I think you've, you've covered pretty much main issues.
All right, thank you for the compliment. That's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to question?
Please, Attorney Ecker.
Chief, my name is Deborah Ecker. We have not met. I'm going to ask you some question. There you are. Okay, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard me. I said we have met.
And we have, okay, I don't, I don't recall. Yes, okay, so we have met. All right, so you told, you just talked about accommodations that others had requested since you've been chief, correct?
I talked about a few that others had requested, and I talked about a singular issue that was not requested.
And this officer, this female officer, never requested to you that, to be able to be assigned days, correct?
That's correct.
She never actually came to you and disclosed that she needed any type of accommodation, correct?
That's correct.
And am I understanding correctly that you deny that you told Attorney Gallagher that it was Officer Graziano who came to you and asked you on the female officer's behalf to be scheduled for days?
My best recollection of my, my conversation with Maura Gallagher was that my, my recollection of my conversation with Officer Graziano was that he had come to me and he had shared concern for that officer. And my best recollection was that she was looking for some assistance. That's, that was my best recollection.
So you deny that you told Attorney Gallagher that Officer Graziano came to you and asked on the female officer's behalf to be assigned to days?
I do.
And you understood that by assigning this officer to days, she would be missing out on the opportunity to be an officer in charge, correct?
I did not know that.
You're chief of the department, correct?
Correct.
And you understand that had she been assigned an evening shift or a night shift, she would have the opportunity to work as an officer in charge, correct?
If she was a senior officer.
So, so it's, you're, you don't have any knowledge of whether the female officer would have been able to work in a supervisory capacity had you not assigned her to all-day shifts? Is that your testimony?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
You're chief of the department, correct?
That's correct.
And you understand that when patrol officers work as officers in charge, they are acting in a supervisory capacity, correct?
Correct.
And they gain supervisory experience, correct?
Correct.
And they're paid a differential, correct? Paid more money, right?
Correct.
And so by assigning this officer or any officer to all-day shifts, they wouldn't have the opportunity to work as an officer in charge, correct?
If that, if that happened, yes.
Did you have any reason to believe as chief, when you ordered Sergeant Tedstone to put her on days, that this officer wouldn't have the opportunity to work as an officer in charge?
I didn't order Sergeant Tedstone to put her on days.
You told Sergeant Tedstone to assign the female officer to day shifts, correct?
I spoke with Sergeant Tedstone and I asked him to make it work for that officer.
So were you denying that you directed Officer Tedstone to assign this female officer to day shifts?
Correct.
So that would be wrong in Attorney Gallagher's report as well?
Correct.
And you've read the report, correct?
We have.
And you understand that Sergeant Tedstone told her that you directed her to, directed him to put her on day shifts, correct?
I'm not certain that Sergeant Tedstone testified to that.
In the report, you don't recall that?
I don't recall that.
Do you recall others speaking with Attorney Gallagher and saying that you had directed that this female officer be on day shifts?
No.
So you didn't tell anyone to put this female officer in day shifts? Is that your testimony?
That's my testimony.
You did understand that, well, you, you never sought to talk to her about what she wanted, correct?
I directed Sergeant Tedstone to make things work for that officer. Had anybody, including Sergeant Tedstone, or the officer, or the lieutenant, shared with me that that officer had issue with the day shift, I would have immediately corrected that.
But you didn't reach out to the officer, correct?
I did not.
You reached out to the male officer, correct?
Which male officer?
The one that's a subject of the text messages, that is exhibit 27, correct?
I had a discussion about a separate matter with the male officer.
And this similar issue came up, correct?
No.
It did not? That's not what the text messages are about, the similar issue with the female officer?
No, what, what Maura Gallagher misrepresented is that I offered that officer a reasonable accommodation, and that did not happen.
So it's your testimony, you never offered the male officer to work day shifts as well, correct?
Correct.
You never said that to Attorney Gallagher, correct?
Never said that to Attorney Gallagher.
So she got that incorrect as well, correct?
Got that incorrect as well.
Okay. And then the comment about the female officer being attractive. When Attorney Gallagher was questioning about that and whether you made a comment in front of other officers about that, you didn't offer to tell Attorney Gallagher, well, maybe I didn't compare, but I did say that she's attractive and others might have heard that, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Sure. As I understand your testimony here today, you deny that you told, that you said in front of other officers that, that a comment about the female officer's appearance, correct?
No, I testified tonight and I told Attorney Gallagher that I didn't recall saying such a thing.
And you still don't recall?
Correct.
You didn't tell Attorney Gallagher you never said such a thing?
No, as I tried to explain in my testimony, I, I, Attorney Gallagher was asking questions about comparing and contrasting this officer and another town employee. And I said that I was, I'd never compared and contrasted this officer and another town employee.
And what she was asking you is whether you compared and contrasted their appearances, correct?
That's not correct.
She just said if you had compared and contrasted, that's all Attorney Gallagher asked you?
Yes.
And the female's appearance, the two female employees' appearance, never came into the question that Attorney Gallagher asked you? Was that your testimony?
He asked me if I had made a comment about my officer's appearance and I, and I acknowledged making that comment.
You were also asked questions about an email you sent in August 2019, only to the female officer concerning zero tolerance for sexual harassment, correct?
Correct.
And do you recall Attorney Gallagher asking you about that when she interviewed you?
I do.
And you recall telling her that you sent it in response to concerns raised by the female officer about a training she had to go to?
No.
So she got that totally wrong, too?
Yes, she did.
So Attorney Gallagher got it totally wrong that you told her that you sent the email shortly after the female officer raised concerns about having to go to a training with another male in the department?
Attorney Gallagher misrepresented the discussion we had. She, she took two separate stories I was sharing with her about conversations I had with that officer, and she chose to misrepresent what I said. I did, I never made a comment that I sent this on the heels of that officer going to a, a training. I was sharing a discussion I had with that officer about unrelated issues that had nothing to do with sexual harassment. It had to do with, with a, a concern that the officer shared with me and, and a, a simple request that the officer, officer made of me, which I granted.
Which had, which had nothing to do, according to your testimony, with sexual harassment, correct?
That's correct.
And so you sent this email concerning zero tolerance for sexual harassment only to the female officer in the department?
I sent it as a follow-up to a conversation I had with that officer in the presence of Sergeant Tedstone on or around the time that she graduated from the academy, when I explained to her the issues that we had experienced within the police department when I first came there. Additionally, Attorney Gallagher asked me if I had ever discussed sexual harassment with any of the male officers, and I made it very clear that I had. And in fact, had she followed up and asked officers, they would have shared the same. So Attorney Gallagher misrepresented that I didn't talk about sexual harassment with male officers and that I was simply singling out the female officer.
Chief, when did the female officer graduate the academy?
I don't know. I don't recall the exact date.
Was it sometime in 2017?
It's possible.
And that was two years before you decided to send the email only to the female officer about zero tolerance for sexual harassment?
Correct, because the article jumped out at me in the perf daily clips.
And you didn't feel the need to send it to any of the male officers who you allegedly talked to about sexual harassment, did you?
No, I did not.
Farm Road Incident. Prior to the incident, you had filed, and this other department head had filed cross complaints against one another, correct?
I had filed the complaint against this department head, and the department had filed a cross complaint against me.
And this wasn't the first time the two of you had had negative interactions with one another when the cross complaint was filed, correct?
I'm not sure what you mean by negative interactions.
You had had disputes with this department head before that had escalated?
I had, there were several issues that were brought to my attention involving that department head, which I shared with the town administrator and many times with the Assistant Town Administrator. And I wouldn't go as far as to say that I was doing anything negative toward this particular department head.
And that's what you told Attorney Gallagher, that it was all the other department head? It wasn't you, right? You had a good relationship with him, it was all the other department head's fault, correct?
Absolutely not true.
So you never said that you had a good relationship with this department head to Attorney Gallagher?
I did not say that. Attorney Gallagher asked me what my relationship was like with that department head in October prior to this incident. And I explained to Attorney Gallagher that she should know what our relationship was like, that it was a working relationship. And, and in fact, I had been working that it was a working relationship, and and in fact, I had been working with Clifford and Kenny's consultant, Gene Hurdle, and Jamie Kenny, a partner, to remediate issues involving details and grievances that were filed with respect to that particular department head. I've already acknowledged in the past, when I got a warning letter from the town administrator, that I sent a few text messages that I shouldn't have to that department head.
You were also ordered, as a result of the cross complaints and an investigation, to go to management training as a result of the interaction you had with this department head, correct?
So I wasn't ordered to go to management training. If you read the original document, which by the way, I disputed with the consultant, Gene Hurdle, on several occasions, and Gene Hurdle agreed that her role was not to discuss management training. It had to do with dealing with conflict involving details and other issues involving the other department head in my department.
So it's your testimony that prior to this Farm Road Incident, you were never ordered to go to management training to work out your relationship with this other department head so you can work together harmoniously?
I was I was I was ordered to participate in a facilitation with Gene Hurdle and this other department head.
And you were also given a directive from the then-chair of the Board of Selectmen not to have any interaction with this department head either, correct?
I'll object to that. That's not what the letter says.
Well, let's take a look.
The wording is no direct contact.
Oh, okay, thank you for correcting me. You were ordered, chief, not to have any direct contact with this department head, correct?
Correct.
And so the Farm Incident arises, correct? The Farm Road Incident arises, correct?
Correct.
And you become involved, correct?
Correct.
And it involves this department head that you're not supposed to be in contact with, correct?
Correct.
And you're the chief of police, correct? You've been a police officer for years, correct?
Correct.
And you understand that if if you investigate this and you bring criminal charges, that you can be a witness against this department head, correct?
Correct.
And you understand that as a witness, the district attorney would have to turn over to defense counsel the fact that you had had these negative interactions with this department head, correct?
Again, you're 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 talking about these negative interactions. There weren't many negative interactions between me and this department head. That's that's a gross exaggeration.
Well, there was an interaction with this department head where the two of you filed cross complaints against one another, correct?
You keep utilizing cross complaints. I made a complaint and this department head made a cross complaint.
Okay, so you made a complaint against this department head, correct?
Correct.
He made a complaint against you, correct?
Correct.
That resulted in you're getting a letter from the town administrator, a warning, correct?
I got a letter from the town administrator and from the chairman of the board at the time, Charles John.
Okay, and the letter that you got from the town administrator was a written warning, I recall, correct?
A written warning?
Yes.
It was it was a warning letter, correct?
Okay, and you were you got a warning letter and you were required to go to some sort of training as a result, correct?
Yes.
And so if, as the investigating officer, our charges were brought against this other department head and you had to testify, you would agree with me that the district attorney would have to disclose these past issues that you had with this department head to defense counsel, correct?
I'll object to that. How is he gonna know as a police officer what a district attorney is ethically obligated to do?
Well, you're aware that as a chief, I'm sorry, you have to rule, Chair, on the objection. And I'll tell you why I want it in and why it's not valid, because as a police officer, as we all know, that we have to turn over exculpatory evidence and motive for bringing an investigation would be considered exculpatory evidence in the criminal context.
I do not feel qualified to rule on this.
I'll withdraw the question. I'll ask another question. Okay?
I apologize.
No worries, Chair, no worries.
Someone tell me what exculpatory is.
Yeah, oh, something that could help the criminal defendant. So, chief, you understand what a exculpatory is, evidence is, don't you?
I do.
And you understand that your officers, you know, if there's anything in their background, for instance, truthful untruthfulness, or any bias that may motivate the reason for their testimony, that would have to be turned over to a criminal defense attorney, correct?
I'm not aware of anything that speaks to bias. I am aware of untruthfulness. That's a Brady letter.
Okay, so you think Brady only covers untruthfulness and not any bias on the part of any investigator or any type of exculpatory evidence?
I don't have my law book in front of me, but my understanding of Brady has to do with truthfulness.
And so was it your testimony, well, let me ask you this. When you were contacting the district attorney in your emails, did you tell the district attorney that you had had past issues with this department head?
No.
Did you tell this district attorney when you were asking about the possibility of criminal charges that that this department head might allege that you were biased against him?
I I did not do that, and I simply collected facts and reports and forwarded the same.
And you named this department head to the district attorney, correct?
I did.
And you didn't bother to interview that department head, did you?
I hadn't gotten an opinion from the DA's office at that point. And as I testified to earlier, had I decided to, if I had used my discretion and gone the other way and and decided to charge that individual with a crime, I would have offered them the opportunity to be audio and video recorded, and I would have kept the town administrator and assistant town administrator advised of of my plan.
And that would have been you who would have cross-examined or examined this individual, this department head?
Probably.
And you would have thought that was okay, given the past directive from the Board of Selectmen or the chair of the selectmen?
I would, I would, I'm a police officer. I'm not certain that the board has the authority to tell me that I can't investigate a crime. But I, as I stated, I would have would have offered him the opportunity to be audio and video recorded so there would be no dispute in what was said and how the interview was handled.
You have two sergeants and a lieutenant in the department, correct?
I do.
When this issue came up, you could have delegated to them to investigate, correct?
I wouldn't have a subordinate investigative department head.
Not even a lieutenant, even though they're police officers?
I wouldn't have a subordinate investigative department head.
And you wrote an email to Mr. Williams after the incident, correct, telling him about it?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams wrote an email back to you on October 17th, the same day that you sent it?
Can you please refer to the exhibit?
Sure, it's Exhibit 7, if you want to take a look.
Okay.
Okay, and you write an email to David Williams and CC, the assistant town administrator, Attorney Klein from my office, and the chief, and you say, I've received a preliminary complaint, et cetera. In addition, I received a communication from a member of the Sherburne Fire as both a witness to and victim of the same behavior.
Correct.
And in response, David Williams sends you back a fairly lengthy email from a it says, Rick, from a supervisory standpoint, your report will be useful as a complaint from you, but from an equal employment and harassment standpoint, an employee needs to file their complaint with me in accordance with the personnel administrative plan. And he goes on to cite that, correct?
Yes.
And you did not like that Mr. Williams wrote you that email, correct?
I did not like that Mr. Williams responded all to include Chief Kenny, Darren Klein, and Diane Moore's and singled me out, Rick, as you just stated.
So even though you had emailed all those people, you didn't like that he hit reply all, correct?
I don't, I didn't like that he singled me out, Rick, as opposed to Rick and Erin.
Okay, oh, the other chief. And you write Mr. Williams back and you tell him of your displeasure that you received the email and you thought it was demeaning, inflammatory, and officious, correct?
Correct.
And so at that point, Attorney Klein writes you back and he says, you were not singled out. David sends out similar emails most times when he receives a notice of similar complaints, correct?
Correct.
Nowhere there does anyone tell you or authorize you to conduct an investigation, correct?
I'm sorry, you didn't finish, you didn't finish the rest of that email from Darren Klein.
Oh, sure. You were not singled out. David sends out similar emails most times when he receives notices of similar complaints. Again, it would benefit you, not think everything is personal to you. Thank you. Correct? Okay. And you write back to Attorney Klein, I do not agree with you at all and do not appreciate the continued narrative that I am personalizing anything, correct?
That's correct.
Nowhere does anyone authorize or tell you to conduct an investigation, correct?
Nope.
But you proceed to do it anyway, correct?
I'm not sure that the town can tell me whether or not to conduct an investigation, a criminal investigation.
So you proceeded to conduct it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in this investigation, and you don't see anything wrong with your conducting a criminal investigation into this department head that you had filed a complaint against in the past?
No, it's not about feelings, it's about facts.
And you don't see anything wrong with conducting an investigation into a department head where you'd received a disciplinary letter about, correct?
I didn't receive a disciplinary letter.
You received a letter of warning, correct?
Correct, that's not discipline.
Chief, you're you've been an officer for how many years?
I'm sorry.
You've been an officer for how many years?
About 27, 28.
And you're familiar with the concept of progressive discipline?
Yes, I am.
And the first level of progressive discipline is a verbal warning, correct?
Correct.
And the second level of discipline is a written warning, correct?
Again, a written warning is is not discipline. You're talking about the progression that leads to discipline. Discipline has to do with a suspension or some type of corrective action. In fact, when you receive a disciplinary warning letter, you don't even have the right to appeal a warning letter.
So you, is it your testimony that your officers don't consider written warnings to be any sort of discipline?
It is my testimony, and I have shared that with my officers on several occasions.
And have you had officers request to take those out of their personnel files?
I'm I'm not certain that I have.
But you've heard of that in the past, because people don't want that in their personnel files, correct?
I don't think many people enjoy having letters in their personal file, no.
Okay, you then proceed to conduct an investigation and you provided, or through your counsel, emails that are Exhibit 28 that you sent to Mr. Williams. You never advised, and I guess I should add, you never told Town Council Attorney Klein that you were going to the district attorney's office, did you?
Town council was aware that I had done exactly that. And and there is an email response from Mr. Williams, where he CCs Attorney Klein, after I had sent the request from October 24th looking for any reports, statements, or or any discussions the town administrator had with persons involved thus far, please forward to my attention so I can add to the documents I'll be forwarding to ADA Miller. The town administrator generated, rather than following the email stream that I sent him, he generated a secondary email, sent it to me and CC Diane Moore's and Darren Klein. And it said, chief, this is just a quick email to let you know that I do not have any documents to submit at this time that were requested by you in regards to the investigation involving the tree clearing incident slash FD and Assistant Chief McPherson.
And Attorney Klein's not on that first email when you talk about the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, correct?
I believe so.
And by that point, you had already contacted the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, correct?
I had not. The email, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
You don't believe you had contacted them by then?
By which date?
The first email, October 24th, the one that you sent to Mr. Williams, when you said additionally, I'm making you aware that information gathered thus far prompted me to communicate with Middlesex District Attorney's Office for an opinion.
Correct, and I was waiting for any documentation from Mr. Williams before I was gonna forward that off.
You had already contacted, according to this email, the Middlesex District Attorney's Office?
I reached out to them, correct.
You didn't ask permission to be able to do that, correct?
No.
No one gave you approval to do that?
Correct.
And according to you, no one can stop you from doing that, correct?
According to me, I'm not certain that the town can tell me not to conduct a criminal investigation.
I believe, just give me one minute. Okay, I don't have any other questions, Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know how you want to handle it, whether you want to, of course, I just have in connection with one of the exhibits, so that Attorney Ecker was was asking about. So I don't know if you want to have me ask that first, or you ask questions and then come back to me?
So just clarify, you want you want to ask Chief Thompson a question about exhibit that Attorney Ecker brought up?
Yes.
That seems fair. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just asking, just
Yeah, do you have any
Asking the timing.
Attorney Ecker?
No, go ahead. He can ask his question.
Sure, so, chief, would you look at Exhibit 7? I think Attorney Ecker pointed you to that.
Yes.
Okay, and if you look at, and I think she only had you read part of this, and I direct you to your your email on Thursday, October 17th, at 10:53 a.m.
Yes.
From you to David Williams?
Yes.
Okay, and would you just read the last paragraph of that?
Sure.
Please.
I received a complaint from a police department employee, was carbon copied on a secondary complaint made to Chief Kenny. My focus will be to collect all the facts from my personnel and any and all witnesses, complete a report, and forward as soon as practical.
And that was to David Williams with copies to Diane Moore's, Darren Klein, and Erin Kitty, right?
Correct.
That's the only question I had, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the chief among the board members? Yes, Chuck, I see. If someone could please unmute, Chuck, please.
Yes. Chief Thompson, I have a question. I may have misunderstood your testimony, but I understood you to say earlier that you thought Maura Gallagher inaccurately reported your discussion about whether or not you attempted to interview another department head. I was looking at the findings of fact on page 22 of her report and wanted to ask specifically if that statement is accurate or inaccurate. Part of it's redacted, so I will try to my best to honor that. It reads, Chief Thompson indicated to this investigator that he did not attempt to interview, this is redacted, but it's a reference to the other department head, but quote, if it had gone in the direction of a criminal investigation, the chief would have attempted to interview, and it's redacted, the other department head. I was confused by your earlier statement and testimony. Are you, is your testimony that that summary, that finding of fact is not accurate?
Not accurate.
Could you explain to me why you don't think it's accurate?
Because it's not accurate. That's not what I told Attorney Gallagher.
I'm sorry, I'm confused, because I thought that's what you had described earlier tonight in your testimony. What did you tell Attorney Gallagher?
Just what I testified, that if if I had, you had not used my discretion and forwarded this off to the town? had, you had not used my discretion and forwarded this off to the town, that I would have offered that department head the opportunity to be interviewed.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure how that's inconsistent with what I, the text that I just read, but thanks for that.
Any questions among the board members? Okay, seeing none, I believe the next phase would go to closing statements, if that, if that's the case, Attorney Ecker?
It is the case, yes.
I personally would like to take a small break, I don't know how others feel here. I can definitely stretch my legs a little bit while we're looking at here. Do you wanna reconvene pretty much at nine o'clock even?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that.
I would be.
All right, very good. See you guys soon. Well, my, my last one back, that's rare. I know, there's Paul, George, Chuck. Hear me?
I'm on the select board diet where you don't get dinner.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. At least, you know, if you have Zoom meetings, we can turn the picture off, you can eat dinner at the meeting, but. All right, so I think we're ready to reconvene here, come back to order. And I'm gonna just, you know, ask some advice to Attorney Ecker on just proceeding now. I believe we go to closing statements, I believe Attorney Joyce gets the first closing statement and then, and then you, is that correct, Attorney Ecker?
Correct.
Okay, Attorney Joyce, are you prepared for a closing statement? Could someone unmute? Austin, please.
There we go, okay.
Prepare to make a closing statement?
I know that's by design, mute all the lawyers so you don't have to hear from them and they don't monopolize the conversation. So is my time limit eleven o'clock? Do I have until eleven to make my closing? Is that it? Is that what I understand?
Sure, let's go with that.
All right, lawyers like to talk, but I frankly don't, so let me, let me try to be as concise as I can. And I'll, lawyers often say just one more question and it's one thousand more questions. All right, we, we're here in connection with the, essentially the charge letter, I guess, and now, I, this, the incidents here run over quite a bit of time in the past, and there, there's very little direct evidence to you, other than frankly, in some ways, the, the two witnesses tonight about one of these conversations. And I think that, you know, that there's a dispute about what Chief Thompson told Attorney Gallagher, and that, that problem lies at the heart of Attorney Gallagher's investigation. As you've seen as an example from the Farm Road investigation, when you talk to witnesses, one way to ascertain what they tell you is to have them sign the statement to review it, sign it, say, yes, that's what I say. We don't have that with Attorney Gallagher's report. What we have is her summary of different things spun in a lot of different ways, and she decided to put in what she wanted to put in, and I think you can, reading between lines is that it, she only put in what fit her agenda rather than what the witnesses told her. You know, if she asked questions and they gave her information in a normal investigation, all of that would be in the statement, relevant or not. And then the person trying to cull through it makes the determination whether it's relevant to what they're trying to decide. We don't have that here, and I, that's at the fault of the investigator. That's why we tried to, to bring witnesses that would come in and tell their story so that the board could hear from them and then judge their credibility, not have Mara Gallagher judge their credibility. And I think that what you can find from this is that there, there is some support based on the testimony you've heard for a couple of minor incidents that occurred. I don't think that these are firing offenses by any means, and I think that the, the board should get Chief Thompson back to the department and get it up and running again so that everything can get back on track here. I think that this investigation has created a problem because of the way the town handled it. I think the town has a problem with the way it handles employing investigations. There is absolutely no way that this town can encourage its employees to come forward to make complaints if it doesn't tell them what happens. And, and that's part of the reason for this being public, so that the public knows how its town leaders handle complaints against town employees. The police department makes a point of informing complainants how its investigations turn out, but the town doesn't. So it's obviously understandable that Officer Bush was reluctant to be involved here because the investigation she was involved in Farm Road left her in the dark. She had no idea whether the town supported her in her complaint or her complaints of misconduct in that at all, and I think that comes back to the leadership in the town. It doesn't come back to Chief Thompson because he runs his department on accountability. And I think that the incidents here don't rise to the level of termination. And I gotta say, I, I'm, I'm so confused, and, and I was confused Thursday night, I just don't understand the argument with regard to the, the Farm Road thing because there was an incident, the two chiefs have an obligation to look out for their employees and to determine things that involve them, and they looked into it. They didn't do it in secret, they kept the, the town administrator advised, they passed the information along to him, but yet nothing came back to them as to what happened. They were left completely in the dark, and in fact, they didn't know that there was a third complaint with regard to that incident. And frankly, they should have, certainly Chief Kenny should have because it was against one of his employees. And that's a failure up at the town hall, not at the police department. And I don't think you can fault the chief for investigating something that involved one of his employees and passing off. And I think his point is well taken. The town, regardless of what it wants to do with regard to the chief and one of the other department heads, it can't interfere in a criminal investigation. That's, that's between the chief and the district attorney's office. And to interfere in the investigation or to intimidate somebody involved in the investigation is a crime in and of itself, so I think, you know, that should be clear that the town can't do that regardless of what Mara Gallagher says in her investigation report, that how to handle that investigation is within the chief's discretion. And that the discretion or advice of the district attorney's office. So I'm gonna urge the board to, to, you know, get the chief back to work and, and get the department running back the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Ecker, please.
I will be brief. So this was not a criminal investigation. An employment investigation such as this, when someone brings a complaint or raises a concern about unequal treatment, is handled by filing or by going to the town administrator, the personnel board, and either the town administrator, in this case, an outside attorney, conducting an investigation. It's not a case where people write statements and you sign them and it goes to court. The town handled this properly and having an outside investigator do it because it did involve the department head, and those involved aren't necessarily told the results. So the town did handle it as they should under their personnel policy. That being said, if you look at the notice of disciplinary hearing, there, you've heard evidence and the investigation report supports that the chief violated the EO policy by talking about the officer's appearance. By, he denies it, but there are others who cooperated directing that she be placed on leave, knowing, although he denies that he knew this as well, that she would be paid less because she would be on days and not have OIC opportunities. Likewise, by singling her out and sending her the sexual harassment email and talking to her repeatedly about sexual harassment, that violates the EO policy. As I said at the beginning, the most egregious charge is the untruthfulness, particularly for any police officer and the chief, who is held to a very high standard. And while the chief now denies that he made certain comments that Mara captured in her, or Attorney Gallagher captured in her report, there was cooperation for, for it from others. I asked Officer Graziano if he stood by his statements that are contained in his, in the report, and he said yes. And so I won't belabor them, I had talked about them earlier on, but then the chief now denies he directed that she be placed on days. He had said that it was an officer who came to him who asked on her behalf that she be put on days, that was shown to be false. He had told Attorney Gallagher that he had sent the two thousand nineteen email with the zero tolerance after having a conversation shortly before about the officer's concerns about going to a training. That was corroborated as not being accurate. Those are the most serious. The chief's comment to Attorney Gallagher as well about why he didn't interview the other department head because it wasn't yet a criminal investigation, obviously turned out not to be true because he had investigated criminally, he hadn't charged, but he had investigated, he had provided information to the district attorney for an opinion. So that is the most concerning, and that leaves us to So that is the most concerning, and that leaves us to the conflict of interest or an appearance. And given the past history between the two, and you'll see in the exhibits, the directive that had been given, that he not have direct contact with his employee, that they had undergone management training, there certainly is an appearance that the chief, even though he's chief of police, has a vendetta, or went after this guy, and sought criminal charges against us. Whether that turned out to be true or not, certainly that would have had to been disclosed in any criminal interaction, and certainly would have had to been disclosed even internally, as it was during the course of this investigation. So it's, the position of, that's contained in the disciplinary hearing, letter, notice of disciplinary notice that there is just cause set forth therein to discipline the chief and up to the termination that was recommended by Attorney Gallagher.
Alright. Very good. And now we deliberate.
So that's to close the evidentiary piece of it, and now you deliberate.
Well, thank you both attorneys, thank all sides, and thank, I also like to thank all the witnesses. You know, this is, I think, new to a lot of people here, and I think this went reasonably well. I guess, Jeff, if you can make sure at least all the select board is unmuted.
Just did that.
Okay, very good. I guess I'll open up for discussion. Does anyone want to make any statements about what we just, what we just heard over these last two nights? Any thoughts?
Their attorneys would lead the way, but.
I'll be you, Jeff, you always have something to say.
There's a lot of things that trouble me on both sides of this event. I'm very troubled by the chief of police going to the district attorney without notifying the town. His statement was that we can't prevent him from doing that, I don't disagree, and I respect Rick's judgment professionally. But there's a difference between doing that and notifying the town that you're doing it, so they're at least aware it's going on. I don't find that that was an appropriate action on his part, in my view. And I don't have, you know, criminal law training whatsoever, so I'm not sure it's a question of what's allowed, or what's common practice, but I think it's a question of courtesy to the town. So that, that is one thing that bothered me enormously.
Right, George, go ahead.
I just want to address the charge number 10, truthfulness. That's, that's one that's really sticking out to me, just based on past interactions with Chief Thompson, with our, in, in sessions with us, where he said the main thing that a police officer has is his integrity, and through the testimony of other officers to, through this process, that verified that what was in the report was accurate. Some mentioned that maybe there were things left out, but they did say it was accurate. It showed that what was in the report, what Chief Thompson reported to Mara Gallagher, was not truthful. And I think that's a real problem for a police chief.
Yeah, they said it was accurate, but I'm also stuck on what Officer Bush said, that said it was written with a slant. Officer Bush clearly made it known that, that she thought it was written with a bias and didn't capture.
Officer Graziano was asked, was the report truthful, and a lot of the contradictions were with Officer Graziano's testimony, and he said yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was, and it wasn't just, there were five police officers that Mara Gallagher cited, as I found, found incredible evidence that the chief's statements were, were not truthful. I, I, they're trying to categorize the, the Mara Gallagher's report is gonna be made public, and it's, it's a long report, it's 27 pages long. The findings of fact are, there are about 163 of them, but she discusses nine incidents, and then the status of the, you know, more subjective, this Sherwin Police Department culture. And they're basically with, if I, by my count, 13 alleged violations of town policies. The EOC policy, employee conduct policy, sexual harassment policy, and the Sherwin Police Department's Rule 7.7 dealing with truthfulness. And of those 13 violations, or alleged violations, she found credible evidence to find violations in, I think it's 10 of the 13. I frankly found the farm pond incident, the underlying facts, to be less critical than the statements about whether it was or was not sent to the, the district attorney's office. I shared Jeff's view, that it's clearly within the discretion of the police chief to conduct the investigation. I just think particularly where it involved another department head. But I, I find the two most serious allegations are providing false information, and that was based on the testimony of five different witnesses, all of whom are police officers in his department. So, I don't think this was an exhaustive criminal investigation, but I think it was thorough. And so I disagree, Eric, with, there were at least five officers that provided testimony that the information provided by the chief was not, was not accurate, was not truthful.
Okay. And just to clarify, there were, there were seven items, of which we found sufficient evidence to bring the charges on.
Well, there are nine, if you include the two violations and truthfulness under the Sherwin Police Department Rule 7.7.
Okay.
Which I had asked Mara Gallagher about specifically last Thursday night. Because I think that is a separate, there were basically, there were two allegations about a sexual harassment policy alleged, those, there was no credible evidence finding supporting that. But I am including those two in my total of nine.
Okay.
I think Chuck, let me ask a clarifying question, if I understood the testimony tonight. There, one of the truthfulness allegations related to the other male police officer that supposedly, you know, that the officer was not made a special provision, or stated he wasn't, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that there actually, that added exhibit number 28 contradicts that. I think that that exhibit 28 shows that that, if I'm not misunderstanding, shows that that they act, that actually was not a false statement.
The, the, the report cites two officers, one of whom did not testify, so I will not identify him or her by name. But the other one was Officer Graziano, and he testified specifically that he found the, the summary and the statements in the investigator's report to be accurate. That's on item two.
I guess the one I'm referring to is item one, where he offered another officer in late fall of September 2019 declined an offer, office, a similar offer, and it seems to be this, I may not have the exhibit number right, but it looks like I have the wrong exhibit, I think it's the exhibit 14 one that we described, where, where there's a text message saying that he, he thanked the chief for consideration.
27, perhaps?
14 is the report of the Philadelphia police head, so it's not, it's not that one.
But you remember the text we saw, it's a one-page exhibit, maybe it is 27, Eric, let me look and see, I think it is 27. Yeah, 27, that's the one I meant. So I think this may address item one, that you had offered a similar shift change to another officer. And I think she's calling that false, and that the officer declined, and I'm not exactly sure why that's being called a false statement, but this exhibit of this, what appears to be a text message, seems to me to mean that's not false statement. It says so-and-so, I'm truly sorry, let me know if there's anything you need, right now, folks is there to support you, or something to that effect. And he says, chief, thanks for taking the time out to seek me today, I enjoyed our courtesy. I mean, there's a lot redacted, but I think that refuted.
Yeah, I think you're right.
One of the charges, I'm not positive.
The aspect about how we treated.
Item one on the charges matter, if you call it that.
Yeah, that's the day shift complaint.
Yeah, but, but the one involving the male officer, not the one involving Officer Bush.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wish I had the unredacted version in front of me, because there's so much redacted here that.
I know, it's hard. Okay, well, that still doesn't, I mean, your points are well taken, I just wanted to, I think maybe one point was refuted by that exhibit.
Yeah, I just would note that Officer Graziano was asked specifically whether or not this
Yes.
The summary of what he said to the investigator was accurate, and he said that it was, and that, that would include this point, that's item two.
Yes. Now, we don't, one thing is.
And just to point out, Luke Tedstone also testified that the report was accurate. He did suggest that there were things left out. That was exactly what he testified, that we heard him on Thursday night. He, he thought it wasn't complete, but he did not say it was inaccurate.
Yeah, both Tedstone and Bush both testified. Well, Bush once said it was written with a bias, and Tedstone said it was definitely incomplete. Which I, it goes to also just another issue I have, which is that, you know, Officer Bush, basically, I know she was advised that she didn't have to testify, she came here, testified, you know, to some extent on the chief's behalf, was very unsatisfied with, with her questioning and testifying for the actual investigation itself. I didn't realize till tonight, she actually wasn't a complaint, it actually came secondhand, as apparently as an obligate, obligated reporting. I think it might, it muddies it up enough to the point where like, I'm not sure this justifies full-fledged termination with another discipline is considered, but I just don't think, I think there's enough questions about this report and about in it, and I just don't think it justifies a full-level termination. People give thoughts on that?
Eric?
Yeah, Paul? Where are you, by the way? Is your camera off?
No, he's on there.
Oh, there you are, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, please, please, go ahead.
Just give you some of my thoughts. The way the town handles complaints, internal complaints like this, is to go hire an independent outside investigator. That's what was done here. We got somebody who was outside the town, who came in and conducted an investigation. And over the course of these two days of hearings, I've heard a lot of criticism of the investigator. And I think that's that's not right. It doesn't sit right with me. When you hire an investigator, investigator comes in, conducts an investigation, I understand why the attacks were made on the investigator by the chief and the chief's lawyer. But I believe the investigator and the investigation was conducted in good faith, was independent, and did a pretty good job. A lot of time was spent on this by the investigator. So that's my first point. The second point is that the tone of the emails, when, when the town administrator raised objections to what the chief was doing, the tone of the email back from the police chief is not something that I want to see in any department head in any town. The what he called the town administrator, how he characterized that effort by the town administrator, I just thought that was over the top. And then it sort of got doubled down when town council, there was an exhibit about the town council. And again, there was an angry response back to our town council, who again is an outsider, these are outside professionals. It, it was perfectly obvious from these emails that there was an enormous amount of bad blood. That's, that's very troubling. There was quite a head of steam that those, those emails show. And then we have the efforts by the Board of Selectment itself. The, the letters we sent, the letter from Chuck Yan. Basically, we were saying to the chief, leave that department head alone. And now I'm quite surprised to find out the chief was doing this investigation himself, and was sending stuff to the district attorney looking for criminal charges for things like driving to endanger, because the other department head rushed to the scene of the tree incident. This just doesn't sit right with me. This just isn't uncomfortable. And then when I try and step back and take a bigger picture of this, in today's world, we have issues being raised across the nation about police, police behavior, police conduct. And it seems to me that it's imperative that the police department need to behave well. Not just with regard to, to citizens on the street, but also with regard to other coworkers, people in other departments, and with the town itself. In this, in this day and age, we have to have a police department that is above question. So that every citizen would feel that no matter how angry the the chief or anybody else in the department is about them, that they will be treated with respect, with dignity, and with the kind of, of behavior that we all would expect under the golden rule, to treat everybody as we'd want ourselves to be treated. So all of those things correlate to various rules and regulations that were not followed according to the investigator. So here we are, we had an investigator, we listened to her testimony, we saw how she responded to all kinds of questions about her findings. And she testified over and over again that she felt the chief had lied to her. She felt that there were things going on that were wrong. And that's just something I don't think that we can just walk away and say, well, there's some question about this, and some question about that. I don't, I don't see how we can walk away from that. There's some serious issues here.
Okay.
I believe we need to address it.
I see that Chuck, um, Chuck wants to be recognized, please Chuck.
I just wanted to, I didn't want to interrupt Paul, but. but you made a statement, Eric, that I think is important. You understand this as a day-to-day manager, but I just think it's important for the folks that are listening to this. One of the difficulties is, this really is tough stuff, and it's tough for a witness to come forward. But under the state and federal EEOC policies and sexual harassment policy of a town employee, here's an allegation, I think you summarized it, Eric, as what, duty-bound? Or you had a shorthand for it?
Obligated reporting.
They have an obligation to bring it forward. It's not pleasant, but once the town is aware of an EEOC or sexual harassment allegation, we have to investigate it. A corollary to that is, there's been much, much discussion. We spent several hours talking about this farm road down tree incident. First of all, it's one of the nine incidents that was discussed, but I'm just, I'm very concerned. This disciplinary hearing is public, because the chief requested it to be public. I don't want any town residents to assume there was or was not discipline meted out by the town to other folks involved in that incident. If it was, it's confidential, it's not subject to disclosure. And I'm just, I'm really concerned about this argument that the town has not conducted the investigation properly. Retaining outside counsel, independent counsel, I think is exactly the right way to do it. So I'm sorry, I just, I wanted to flesh out your two-word comment, Eric, which is, has a lot of merit.
I would like to add something to Chuck's comment, just, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but the fact that this was public, I do want to point out, was requested by the chief. I think there were a lot of things disclosed in a public forum here that normally would be in an executive session to protect the innocence of people that are accusing and that are doing things. And I'm quite disturbed by this, to be quite honest. I'm sad that people had to testify and go through this process that discourages people from reporting things that they think are wrong. I'm very upset about that, and I really think that this process is not right.
Appreciate it. It is a law by law, but I think we see a point, I guess a good point. Um, all right, any other discussion, any discussions are, you know, I think we seem to be a little bit divided here. I'm still compelled by Officer Bush's testimony tonight, where I don't think I'm going to support at least termination. If you want to discuss other disciplinary actions, or if people want to discuss what your thoughts are on potential disciplinary felony.
Eric, my view is we have a recommendation of an independent outside investigator and a recommendation of town council, that these are terminal offenses. So I disagree with Attorney Joyce's recommendation, and I don't, I'm looking for the language for the motion. I would make that motion. Perhaps Counselor has that language.
We've had so many emails, I don't.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to find it in the 100 emails we've had on this.
So Chair, do you want to provide the language, or do you?
Yeah, I actually printed it up, I'm old school. Are you guys around your emails right now?
I do, I actually found it, I found it. Chuck, I think this is the motion.
Basically, they gave a motion not terminate, a motion to terminate, our motion to another form of discipline.
I think what Chuck wants to say is, I move that the select board vote to terminate Chief Thompson's employment based upon the charges set forth and the notice of hearing being substantiated and providing just cause to terminate Chief Thompson's employment with the town of Sherburne, and to further authorize that the town's council draft a decision consistent with the select board's vote and evidence introduced at the hearing. The board votes to have the chair of the select board work with town councils in drafting the decision.
Thanks, George, that is the language I was looking for, that would be my motion.
And I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? Like I said, I'm still not going to support termination in this case. I think there is some questions on the investigation, and I just don't think these rise to that level, but let's let's go full round and take the vote, we have a motion and a second. Jeff, how do you vote? You know, I do it anywhere I see people, and since you're a moderator, you always come in the top left-hand corner.
W always goes last, you know that. I'm very torn between a termination and some sort of other disciplinary actions, so I'm having trouble, because we would then have to define another disciplinary action, but in the absence of not knowing that disciplinary action, I guess I would vote aye.
Okay. Paul, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Chuck, how do you vote?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
I guess I'm the sole nay. Okay, I guess Attorney Eckhart, what do we do at this point here?
You closed the hearing, and you have voted, you voted to work with me to draft the notice.
Yep, yep, I see that, okay.
Eric, I'm sorry, I should have probably explored this when we made the motion. If you're not comfortable working with town council on that, I'm happy to amend the motion to have the vice chair do that. I don't want to put you in a position where you, you know, you've voted not to support this motion. I'm not questioning your integrity and ability to do it, but if it's something you're not comfortable doing, perhaps it makes sense to amend it to have the vice chair work with town council on that. Attorney Eckhart, does that make sense?
It's my job.
It's up to the chair, he can.
I can do it.
And I'm happy to help, Eric, if you need any help.
Sure, okay, absolutely. All right, any motions, any further motions upon this?
Move to adjourn.
Well, just a question.
Okay, Paul?
I understand that the investigator's report in a redacted form will be public, is that?
I believe so.
David, David, could you unmute and talk about this? Because I've had questions about the recordings of these hearings and all that. Just talk about when these things will be available to the public.
This is a question for our council, because the documents, the redacted documents are all available. It's, we can start responding to the request for that information as soon as I hear from council that it's okay to send them out.
Right, in the redacted form, they are public. I do know that David has been working with an attorney in my office who works on the public record responses to have those then made public, because it is a public hearing, and they have been redacted to protect confidentiality of those who, of personnel information.
Does that, does that answer, George?
Paul, I think it was Paul that asked the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, so I assume that Deb is saying that these are, these are available as soon as the hearing closes.
Yes, the public, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion from George to close the hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
And Chuck?
Aye.
I am there as well. All right, thank you, everyone.
Good night.